Okay, Chair Holland, I see that it's 6:00. Would you like to get started and then I'll do the Zoom stuff?
Yes, that sounds good. So I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask Hatton to explain for anyone who might be joining us remotely at the meeting about how to make public comments on either agenda or non-agenda items.
Okay, good evening. This is Hatton Litman, the Communications Director, speaking. Just to let you all know, this session is being recorded and it's also being livestreamed by our partners, MCAT, on their Facebook and our Facebook page. Just a few tips for joining our meeting on Zoom. If you'd like to control what we see and hear from you tonight, you'll take your cursor down to the lower left-hand side of your screen, and you'll notice there are buttons for muting and unmuting yourself and starting and stopping your video. If you'd like to chat with us tonight, just special note that the chat is only turned on to chat with the host, that's me. You can use that if you're having any sort of technical difficulties, but the chat will not be available for the trustees to see, and it will not be part of public comment. If you would like to join and make public comment, you will need to raise your hand. If you're working on a new version of Zoom, you take your cursor to the bottom right-hand of the screen, and there's a little smiley face for the reactions button. Click on that and then choose the option Raise Hand. If you're working on an old version of Zoom, you can access that by clicking on the Participants button. You'll see a list of everybody in the session, and at the bottom of that white window is the option to raise your hand. When you do raise your hand, you'll be placed in a queue in the order that you selected to raise your hand, and we'll call on you one by one. If you need to access any of those controls via phone, you'll press *9 to raise your hand and *6 to mute and unmute yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will go ahead and welcome everyone, and I'll take role. I believe that all trustees are present, but just because there's a mix of in-person and on Zoom. Trustee Holland is present. Trustee Evgaris is present. Trustee Decker is present. Trustee Hobbins is present. Trustee Lorenzen is present. Trustee McDonald is present. Trustee Mercer is present. Trustee Olperson is present. Trustee Sturbis is present. I believe that's Trustee Vogel on the phone who is present, and I see Dr. Watson saying yes. I think I've got her number memorized now. And Trustee Wake is present, so we're ready to go. So if we can stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you can lead us in that, Dr. Watson?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three on the agenda is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. Is there any request from any trustees, either on Zoom or in person, to somehow modify the agenda? I'm not seeing any hands go up, either physically or virtually, so we'll keep the agenda as it has been printed. Item number four is to approve the Board of Trustees' Regular Board Meeting Minutes from February 23, 2021, that begin on page four. First, are there any requests for any modifications to those minutes? I'm not seeing any hands go up. So is there a motion to approve the minutes from the Regular Board Meeting of February 23, 2021? By Trustee Evgaris. Is there a second? Second by Trustee Olperson. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. And Trustee Vogel?
Vogel is yes.
Thank you, and that is unanimous. Then we move on to the Board of Trustees' Regular Board Meeting Minutes from March 9, 2021. They begin at page seven. Again, is there any request for any modifications to those minutes? Seeing no hands raised, then is there a motion to approve the minutes from the Regular Board Meeting of March 9, 2021? Moved by Trustee Evgaris. Is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Hobbins. All those in favor, either raise your hand or indicate by saying yes. That is unanimous as to all trustees present, and I see Trustee Service, Trustee McDonald, Trustee Wake, and Trustee Lorenzen. Trustee Wake, did you vote yes? And Trustee Decker?
Yes, yes, I did.
Okay, I didn't see a hand, sorry. And so those minutes are approved unanimously. Now we come to public comment on non-agenda items. These would be public comment that anyone in the Missoula community wants to make to the board on topics that we will not be discussing tonight, and so we do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. You identify yourself, and if your name has an unusual spelling, either first or last, please spell your name. And then your hands do go up in a queue, so I will call on people as their hands are raised. And so I see Ms. Sampson has a hand raised. Sampson, go ahead and unmute and make public comment.
Hi, I'm Alyssa Sampson, A-L-I-S-S-A-S-A-M-P-S-O-N. I've never attended one of these before, so I hope I'm not doing anything wrong. But today I wanted to bring to your attention the racist and overall bigoted culture that Big Sky High School withholds. As I'm sure some of you have heard, there was recently a white student that goes to Big Sky that was saying racist and quite vulgar things towards Indigenous peoples on social media, and basically how they deserved mass genocide, and then proceeded to essentially talk about how he's earned his white privilege. Now, comments like these are not new to Big Sky. You hear them in the halls, you hear them in class, locker rooms, buses, on the way out to your car, like everywhere. And so this incident was then brought to the administration at Big Sky because it was offensive and potentially threatening to other students that attend. And it was also a huge disruption to the learning environment, although administration didn't seem to think that was the case. And unfortunately, I was informed by Principal Jennifer Courtney and other administration staff that they are unable or unsure of what to do because there are no specific protocols on how to handle a situation like this. I mean, there are threat assessments, which I'm sure you're aware of, in which a student is suspended while being assessed on whether they will be harmful to their peers upon arrival. However, there are no universal consequences for racist behaviors, and I believe that that is something that I and other Big Sky students and students of MCPS agree is unacceptable and needs to be changed and improved immediately. I believe that if you even have to take the precautions of something like a threat assessment, that speaks volumes as to your students. So I think that if this is not something that ends up on your agenda, that would demonstrate your tolerance for racism and be very harmful to your students. And I would also like to note that there is an upcoming walkout on Friday, April 2, at 1:30, pertaining to this incident, and I hope that you see that and recognize it and sympathize for these students of color who experience an educational atmosphere that is not equal to that of their white peers. There must be stricter and more specific protocols in place for racist behaviors like these. I actually ended up transferring from Big Sky for the main reason being that Big Sky's permissiveness and ignorance concerning racism, homophobia, transphobia, sexism, ableism, and bullying was absolutely detrimental to my learning experience in addition to many other students that attend Big Sky or have attended Big Sky. And so those frequent instance remarks and comments are the reason that I am speaking on behalf of most MCPS students and begging you to improve your policies. We cannot progress if you do not progress with us. So thank you for your time, and hopefully your students of color will be able to seek justice within their educations.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any other public comment on a non-agenda item? I'm looking for hands raised. I don't see any Hatton, so thank you. We will now return to the agenda, and so there is correspondence beginning on page 11. And item number 6A is the Health Insurance Trust Fund Report. This is the routine Health Insurance Trust Fund Report that we see each month. This is for the month of February 2021. And now I'll turn it over to Dr. Watson for announcements from the Superintendent.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Hopefully you can hear me okay. Just a few announcements this evening, and then I also did want to give you a very short legislative update. So first thing?
Pardon me, Superintendent Watson, could you? Oh, never mind, you don't need to unmute yourself on Zoom. We can hear you through the audio, thank you.
Does it sound okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. First thing first, I just want to go through a short COVID update, so I will do that. I think I mentioned to you previously that I would try to do the COVID updates during my superintendent update at the start of the meetings, just so that we're clear that COVID still is part of our protocols and our discussions, and we want to just make sure that we're still monitoring this data. So remember, there's about seven data points that we watch every week. This is, these are the data points from last Friday, the end of, the end of the week. We had nine new cases last week. A few of those trickled in at the end of spring break, but basically about nine cases last week. That's up slightly from before spring break. I think before spring break, we were in the neighborhood of three to four to five cases, but up slightly to nine. Active cases as of yesterday, 329, we had six active cases in the district, compared to 18.7 per 10,000 in the county. Still, a majority of our cases are confirmed transmission outside of school. Seventy-eight percent of our new cases were confirmed transmission outside of school. Let's see, close contacts, I haven't updated this yet, but we had 37 close contacts last week. That's staff or a student that is on quarantine due to being a close contact to a confirmed case. Our staffing looks really good last week. All schools' staffing looked good, except just wanted to remind folks that we have our vaccine clinic coming up this week, our second dose vaccine clinic, which is Thursday and Friday of this week. And we are anticipating that that may cause some staff illness. It's just we're hearing that about that second dose, so we just want to be cognizant of that. And then, of course, our contact tracing still looks really good with the cooperation of our, our school nurses and our COVID coordinator, as well as with the Health Department. We're still doing contact tracing very quickly. So that's just a very short COVID update. The other indirect update related to COVID, we did a survey of our MOA students, and about 400 of our MOA students anticipate that they may want to continue in the MOA next year. That's 400 in grades K through 12. So we're just starting the official enrollment process with MOA, but I just wanted to update the board that we still have quite a few students that are interested in continuing with the MOA for a variety of reasons, but that survey, we just wanted to put out and kind of get a sense of how many kids we had that would want to continue with the MOA if it still existed, and about 400. Let's see. Two other things before I get to the legislative updates. We announced, the first Monday after spring break, we announced to our, to our staff and our district that we intend to move to a common schedule next year for our high schools. So all three high schools, with the exception of Willard, will have their own schedule as well as Seeley-Swan High School, but the three large high schools, Big Sky, Sentinel, and Hellgate, will be on a common schedule next year. We believe this is really going to help with students that might be in the MOA that want to take classes at their home school, so it's an option to take some electives at their home school. We also think that a common schedule will really help with efficiencies like traveling teachers and shared programs. For example, our AGAD program is shared by all three schools, so having schools on a common schedule will really help that. So we're moving the schools to a modified block schedule. It's a seven-period schedule, and that's the, that's the announcement we made right after spring break. I just wanted to update the board on that. We have a strategic planning session tomorrow night, and I'm sure we'll talk more about that later during the work session. Just wanted to remind the board that's on Zoom from 6:00 to 8:00 tomorrow evening. And then the last thing I'll do is just talk about a few of the bills in the legislature that I think the board should be aware of, and would remind the board that things change every day in the legislature, so it is hard to keep track of all the things that are going on, but there are a couple of bills I just want you to be aware of that do really impact MCPS, and so I'll try to clarify that in this brief description. Sorry, that's really hard to see, but I'll go through these bill by bill. So House Bill 2 is the major funding bill, the state budget bill. That specifies the budgets for all the various divisions in the government, like DPHHS and OPI. What's interesting or what's important in this bill, there's a couple of issues that I want the board to be aware of. Number one, this bill should carry funding for CSCT. However, there is, there is a lag there. They're expecting a six-month, perhaps a six-month lag in CSCT funding. So what the DPHHS budget should have some CSCT funding in there, but it doesn't currently. They reference some federal funding, but not any state funding. So we anticipate there's going to be a lag in CSCT programming, not just for Missoula, but across the state. Don't really know what that's going to look like for us here yet. We're still trying to work that out and plan for that, but I think we've talked about this before, the importance of CSCT, but that is a federally funded program through Medicaid, and so there's just some issues, ongoing budget issues and discussions around CSCT. The other thing that's in the, that should be in the DPHHS budget but isn't currently there is funding for refugee families, and this will impact, this will impact our, our district. We receive about $75,000. That's federal money. It flows through DPHHS, but it is federal money, and it's refugee funding to help our refugee students. It pays for staff, educational staff, to help our students. Currently, it's not in the DPHHS budget. It may be placed somewhere else, but we're not quite sure yet. So there's a concern there as well that we might lose that funding to help our refugee students, in which case we'd have to figure out another way to make that up. I wanted to talk about House Bill 112 because we have mentioned this bill before. This would impact our district. This bill would require athletic teams to be designated based on sex assigned at birth rather than a sexual identity that a student might identify with, so it would prohibit transgender students from playing with their identified gender. And it actually did pass the Senate today by a 29-21 margin, so fairly small a margin. There was an amendment that may help a little bit. There's an amendment that passed today in this bill that basically says if this bill is challenged by the feds, in that the feds could say, "We're going to withhold your federal funding because of this prohibition." If that gets challenged by the feds, then the bill, the, the law or the act would, would be void. So we'll just have to see how all that plays out. But it did pass the Senate today, and it's already passed the House. Let's see, I'm not going to talk about 246. 329 is a special ed savings account, which causes us a little bit of concern. The way this would work is that if I were a parent and I wanted to enroll my student with some other services, I've had a special ed student, and I wasn't satisfied with the services provided by the district. I wanted to enroll them in another outside agency or outside service, even a private school, then I would be able to request that the district give up its A and B funding that would be given back to OPI, and then OPI would in turn reimburse me for any bills that I might have as a parent related to external services. So there's some constitutionality questions around this bill because, in a sense, you're basically taking public funding and perhaps transferring it to private organizations. So House Bill 329 is still alive, it's still being discussed, and it is a concern because it may violate the Montana Constitution. These are two ESER bills I just want the board to be aware of. ESER 2 is the funding that we're, we should be receiving to help with COVID needs. ESER 2 is now in House Bill 630, and that particular bill is awaiting action by a Senate committee before it gets to the full Senate. As soon as that bill passes, we should have access to our ESER 2 funds, assuming it's signed by the governor. And then the other one that's more recent is the ESER 3 funds. So the ESER 3 funds are related to the, the large stimulus package that was just passed and signed by President Biden, the American Rescue Plan Act. ESER 3 funds are actually in 632. What I want the board to be aware about with this bill is there's currently a clause in the bill that would withhold 20% of the money if a local government or any of its authorized agents have issued health regulations that are more strict than those opposed by the state. So if you're in a county like ours that may have restrictions that are higher than the state's restrictions, essentially, if this bill passes, they could withhold 20% of the funding. Now, there is some discussion whether or not this impacts schools or not, so it's still a little bit unclear, but I just want the board to be aware of that. There was an amendment today to remove that clause, but that didn't pass. So currently, that clause still exists in that bill, and it was passed by the House today on an 86-14 vote. Last one is a charter school bill. Don't know if this will go anywhere, but it did make it through a House committee. It hasn't been voted on yet by a House committee. It was heard on St. Patrick's Day, March 17. But it's a charter school bill that would establish public charter schools. The issue that I have concerns with, with this bill is that it excludes the Board of Public Ed and the locally elected Board of Trustees. The charter schools would be approved by a charter school commission that would be established by the state government. So it, it's concerning because you could create, essentially create a charter school in any community that has no oversight by the locally elected Board of Trustees. So those are my legislative updates. I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of those, and I'll be sure to send those out to the trustees so you get a chance to read through those with these hot links so that you can click on the bill to kind of see where it's at in the legislature. Thank you, I'm sorry, that was a little bit longer than a typical update.
Thanks for those updates and in your announcements. So we move on to seven, which is the Consent Agenda. There are two items. One is a K-12 action item, and the other one is a high school action item. They are set on, they're placed on the consent agenda because they're routine perfunctory matters that we see on a very regular basis. Any trustee can ask that any item placed on the consent agenda be taken off the consent agenda. That would allow trustees to make comments on items on the consent agenda. We do take public comment on any items on the consent agenda. If they remain on the consent agenda, then there is no trustee discussion. So with that, the first item is to approve the Revenue and Expenditure Report for January and February 2021, and this is an elementary action item. So is there a motion to approve? Let me get the right language. Approve the revenue and expenditure reports for those two months? Moved by Trustee Evgaris. Is there a second? Second by Trustee Olperson, and I saw Trustee Lorenzen also raised her hand. And so as I indicated, there is no board discussion. Is there any public comment? I'm not seeing any hands up. So all K-12 trustees in favor of the motion to approve the attached revenue and expenditure reports for January and February, please indicate by raising your hand or saying yes. I see Trustee Decker, Trustee McDonald, Trustee Lorenzen, and in the room, Trustee Hobbins, Trustee Evgaris, Trustee Olperson, and Trustee Mercer. So the motion passes. And now we move on to the second item, which is the parallel recommendation to approve the attached revenue and expenditure reports at the high school level for January and February. Is there a motion to approve the January and February expenditure reports? Moved by Trustee Evgaris. Is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Olperson. And again, there is not board comment on items on the consent agenda, but is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of the motion to approve the attached revenue and expenditure reports for January and February, please indicate by raising your hand in the screen. And Trustee Vogel is hand raised, so that is unanimous as to all trustees at the meeting. Then we move on to Old Business, which is to approve the second reading of Board Policy 1905 face coverings as personal protective equipment. I don't know if you want to provide any background, Dr. Watson, but it's in the 1900 series, which are emergency policies, that once an emergency no longer exists, they will probably sunset unless some separate action is taken. This was presented at the February 9 board meeting and was approved for first reading, and it was sent out for public comment, and as is indicated in the background information, no public comment was received, and so the recommendation is that the trustees adopt Board Policy 1905 face coverings as personal protective equipment. So first, is there any, are there any questions for Dr. Watson? I think we asked several questions at the first reading, as I recall. Seeing no questions, then is there a motion to adopt the Board Policy 1905 face coverings as personal protective equipment? Moved by Trustee Evgaris. Is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Decker. Is there any board discussion? I'll just say I'm glad that we're remaining consistent on this matter since it's thrown a lot of communities and states around country in some confusion about what should be the proper procedure at this point. So thank you for proposing this, Dr. Watson and the administration. Is there any public comment? Or any other board comment first, I should say. Seeing no other hands, public comment, Ms. Ballou? I think your hand is up, go ahead.
Yeah, just echoing what you said, Trustee Holland, oh, Casey Ballou, K-A capital C, two small e's, B-A-L-L-O-U. Just a huge thank you for, for putting this forward and passing this. This gives us consistency, and again, it's just a huge sigh of relief, something we don't have to worry about. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Let me just scroll down to make sure. I'm not seeing any other hands raised. Is that correct, Hatton? Okay. And so all trustees in favor of the motion to adopt Board Policy 1905 face coverings as personal protective equipment, either raise your hands or say aye. And I believe all hands are raised by all trustees either in person or on Zoom, so the motion passes unanimously. And now we move on to New Business Finance, Operations, and Maintenance. And so Pat is going to give us an update, information update on the 2021-2022 budget, and so I'll turn it over to you, Pat.
All right, thank you. So I'll just go over a few, a few items over the next few pages. We talked last time about how the general fund budget's calculated. This is more about the, the revenue and the funding of the budget. The, to start with, on page 28, you'll see a little bit of a different look for the projections and the general fund budget outlook. For the elementary, we're showing two columns, one with, with the levy and one column without. And this is an item for the board to discuss here coming up. It's a, an unusual year. Our budget for next year is built upon our enrollment from this year, and so as mentioned previously, we were down pretty significantly in our enrollment, our A and B, our average number belonging count. In the K, of K6, it was down 322, and in the 78, 56 A and B. So that translates to quite a loss of, of budget capacity and authority. What's reflected with the levy, that first column is the highest budget with a vote, and that amount is based upon the prior year budget plus inflation. So that's an opportunity within the state law that you can adopt what's really higher than the maximum budget. It would require a levy of $867,000. It would result in an increase to the general fund of $160, $68,000. So the, what's significant here is- So the, what's significant here is that a large levy results in very little increase in the budget, and it's primarily a shift of funding from the state to the local taxpayer. So that's what this looks like. The column without a levy would reflect a reduction of budget capacity, which really we haven't seen in the district for a lot of years. And it underscores really the sizable COVID-related drop in enrollment. Further down, a couple of things to point out. Just within these projections, we're contemplating some retiree savings, and then we're building in professional salary and staff increases that have been negotiated. And then anticipated obligations, just some of the obligations we know will result in some budget set aside. What's not reflected here is you'll see the FY '21 work comp credit. So, well, I'm sorry. What's reflected there is the work comp credit. And the reason this is shown as a negative, as a cost, is that last year we used one-time-only work comp credit to help balance the budget. So those funds aren't available this year, so we need to reflect that when we start balancing the budget that we use one-time-only funds and have to address that again this year. What's not shown is the inter-local fund support. Last year, the elementary provided inter-local support for the high school. We won't do that this year, so that's a positive of $194,000. So that'll positively affect the elementary budget. So that'll make that deficit, $1,039,000 with a levy and $1,007,000 without the levy. So hopefully, that makes sense. And I guess before I jump to the high school, I'd ask if there are any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? And I'm looking for participants participating remotely. I don't see any hands up either here or remotely.
So then, page 29, and this is also information you've seen. And it's for the high school, but again, it shows the side-by-side comparison with and without an overbase increase. And I'm not describing these columns as a levy because it is possible that we can increase the overbase levy without a vote. And we did this last year by virtue of some reductions in other budgeted funds in the amount of $152,000. So the most we can ask voters to support would be $107,000. And if we continue to maintain the budgets in those other budgeted funds where they're at, we'd still have available credit balance, if you will, with those reductions to increase the overbase levy by virtue of those prior reductions. If it happens that come August, when we adopt budgets, that any of those other budgeted funds need to be, need to go up higher than this $45,000 difference between the 152 and the 107, then we wouldn't have that levy available. So we're still needing to have the board decide whether to run an operating levy or not. But right now, at that amount, it is possible that we could cover it without a levy. The high school picture is a little different than the elementary. One, there's a lower increase in levy amount. The A and B change was much, much smaller. I should point out for both budget calculations, we use three-year A and B averaging. I think I mentioned that last time, which really is significant because you would have a 322 reduction in K6 enrollment. But with A and B averaging, that amounts quite a bit less. It's reflected on one of our future sheets here, which I'll go over. Following the discussion on the elementary, if you look at the high school budget projections and obligations, you'll also see that the one-time-only funds, the inter-local support, the work comp credit, and excess Title I funds, which total 592,000, they're not available at this point this year. So we need to build those back into the budget because those funds aren't available. Then you'll see the deficit with and without the overbase increase. Like the elementary, and sorry, I forgot to mention that the, what I'm showing here is an expenditure offset using ESER funds. These are the elementary secondary schools' emergency relief funds that Dr. Watson talked about earlier. And given the enrollment impact and the economic impact to the community, we can use those funds under the ESER guidelines to cover and offset expenditures, thereby helping to balance our budget via those funding sources. So part of this backdrop is helpful when we look at the next agenda items to, when we talk about the levy. So just jumping briefly to page 30. This is the revenue. So when we look at how we actually fund those general fund budgets, this is what the school funding formula would dictate. The top half is the elementary, and there's actually some good information here. If you look on the left side, about six lines down, it shows base levy, and below that, overbase levy. Those are the only two items that are locally, that's the local revenue contribution. And so the rest is state revenue contributed. If you follow that across on the elementary, you'll see that the contribution locally goes down by 341,000. And what that means with the reduction of revenue of 699,000, if you look at the bottom of that difference column, the other reduction is in the, at the state level. So there's the 341 in the local level, and then 357 in the state level of revenue that's not supported this year compared to last year. Also to point out, you'll see the information at the bottom shows our A and B numbers from one year to the next. And this is what I was talking about earlier. Using three-year A and B averaging, our A and B for K6 was 4428. And the actual A and B was 4238, the difference of 322 from the prior year versus 132 using three-year A and B averaging. So it's an important feature of state law that allows you to average those A and B counts and sort of minimize the impact of a deep dive like this year on our enrollment. Let's see, then on the high school, there near the bottom half of the sheet, similar information, the base levy goes up 61,000. And if you'll follow that difference to the bottom, the total increase in the high school is 499,000. Of that increase, 61,000 is locally funded. The rest is state-funded. You'll see those other pieces that are funded through the state. Like the elementary, there was a drop in A and B, but in the high school, only 13, again, using three-year A and B averaging. Based upon actual A and B, the drop was 29. So a bit of a variance there. And then jumping to the last two sheets, these are kind of interesting ways to look at that similar information just from a visual standpoint and taking a look at three different years. First, the base budget, which is in that shaded area, that's the budget that districts have to adopt based upon enrollment. And it's partially funded by the local taxpayer under what's called base levies. Those are permissive, non-voted levies. And you can see over the three-year period, that base levy has declined. And compared to last year, as previously mentioned, it's going down 341,000. Also reflected here is an estimate of the tax impact and also the total levy. So if you combine the base levy and the overbase levy, that's the number you see. And for 2022, it's $12.6 million, or 30.8% of the total funding of the general fund in the elementary. It's a reduction compared to the prior year, and you'll see that both the mills from the prior year and the tax impact from the prior year is going down in the elementary based upon a no-levy adoption. And these numbers are based upon current tax values, which will change, will likely go up slightly. And then page 32, it's similar information in the high school. And unlike the elementary, the base budget is going up, and that's because of the inflationary increases and the small decline in enrollment. And that's gone up 499,743. And the base levy locally supported for that increase is the 61,000 that we mentioned previously. You'll also see the, on the overbase side, this is the above-the-line piece, the overbase levy. The 6,430,000 is the voted portion that's been approved in the past and remains intact as it continues to be levied. Up above that is the flex non-voted amount. So last year, it was 152,974. This year, it'd be 107,367, if those other budgeted funds remain where they're at. I guess the one change I'd point out is just the, under 2022 budget, that number there would be 31,205 at the top, rather than, or 31,205, rather than 31,098. Like the elementary, there's a reduction in tax cost per year as well as a reduction in mills, assuming existing tax values. The total levies, you can see the percentage of the total, it's running 34% to 33%. That's the portion of the general fund budget that's supported by the local taxpayer. You know, that was everything I wanted to go over. It's kind of follows the calculation that we talked about last month, and this is more the revenue piece and how it's, the general funds are funded. So happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? And I'm checking remotely. I do have one, Pat, just a clarification perhaps. It's not that our district thinks that there's actually a house for sale at $100,000 in Missoula these days as the average cost of a home, but that's the statutory language that we're required to use. Is that correct?
Yeah, so what we've, what you can do with that number is that we reflect it, and there's a number of different statutes that do reference $100,000. And we usually show it for 100 and 200. And whatever it is at 100, you can just double it to get to 200 and multiply it by the assessed value. But yeah, you're correct. It's for demonstration purposes only.
Are there, trustee Mercer has a question?
Two questions really briefly. Just, I'm not sure I understand where the ESER funds. If we don't spend them to make up these shortfalls, do we use them for other things? Or is this us getting them that we wouldn't otherwise have? And then my second question, if you do the, just to be clear, if you do the averaging and the next year goes up, we don't have to stick with averaging. We can then go actual, right?
Yeah, two great questions. First, on the ESER side, those funds will be earmarked and available for us regardless of, we'll have to use them within the guidelines, but we wouldn't have to use them here to get them. That's correct. And there's guidelines under both ESER 2 and ESER 3 about how they can be expended. And really, some of the language are, to the extent practicable, that funds are used to maintain employment and contractor services and also to maintain the operations of the district. And what we recognize is the budgetary and funding impact that enrollment has just on the calculation and the funding of the budget. And so OPIs and the state, and certainly the federal guidelines, all support this use. From a funding standpoint, just, these are estimates, but ESER 2 funds, as Dr. Watson mentioned, are still part of some legislation to be allocated. We would look at about 8.4 million in total of ESER 2 funds. And then ESER 3, it sounds like there's still some holdback discussion, but early estimates of ESER 3 funds were about $20 million. And the funding expenditure deadlines are in 2023 and 2024. So the, conceptually, it's, you know, as we mentioned with other one-time-only funding sources, that it's one and done, and you got to figure out how to build it back up if it's gone. But just during, as a result of COVID and these sort of uncertain economic times, it didn't seem like an appropriate time to run a levy, despite the clear impact on our capacity and that type of thing. So I think down the road, this is hopefully a situation where enrollment recovers, and then we start getting back on track with our general fund. But this is an appropriate way and a recommended way for us to go using these ESER funds.
Did that answer both questions, trustee Mercer?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions by any trustee? And did you say you had another question?
Well, no, I just, so you can't switch back to normal?
You can. So the, what, what happens, and Dr. Watson and I have both talked about capacity, is that if you have a situation where enrollment doesn't recover, then you lose that opportunity to increase your budgets through a levy. But if your enrollment recovers, and we expect that it will, then you reestablish your capacity based upon that new enrollment. So this feels different than a situation where our enrollment's going this way. We've posted online under Business Services some graphs that kind of, that show where our enrollment's been going over the past 10 years. And the elementary line is definitely growth, and the high school line is a little over, all over the board, but it was a dip and then growth. And that's where we were seeing the high school going too, with some larger classes going through those high schools. So we're hopeful that this will be a recovery in the fall, in the next, in the following year, really.
Any other questions by any trustees? Not seeing any hands up. This is information only, but is there any public comment? Let me just scroll. I don't see any hands up. And so Pat, 9A, 2, and 3 are parallel, but slightly different information is provided as to each one. So I don't know if there's a general discussion to have and then point out the differences, if that's more efficient, or just talk about them as elementary and then high school.
Okay, thank you. And so really, I covered a lot of the same information that's reflected in the background section, and I won't repeat that. It's quite a bit of information in the background section, but we're recommending to cancel the levies. And the cancellation of the levies are based upon a couple of things. One is the availability of ESER funds to balance our budgets and to help support a budget amendment that we anticipate would be available in the fall, in October. And then the other is really the uncertain economic climate in the community just based upon the COVID impact and the timing of a levy in light of COVID, of course, but also the availability of resources to help us out. The high school, as mentioned earlier, is a little bit different than the elementary. Really, even if ESER funds weren't at play, we'd likely recommend cancellation of that levy, given the amount and the potential to cover that obligation through this flexible overbase increase based upon prior reductions. So that's sort of the long and short of it on both those elementary and high school levies.
Any questions for Pat? I do have one question. I think we discussed. I think we discussed generally, if if there were levies, we would be paying for the cost of a mail-out ballot as well. And although it's not a, I mean, it's a significant amount in terms of it could be used for other things, but do you generally have a figure that if we were to adopt or make a decision to go out with levies, what the cost to the district would be?
Yeah, we we would think that if we were running elections, mail ballot elections in both districts, it would it would be in the seventy thousand range to operate those mail ballot elections.
Any other questions? Looking for questions online. Not seeing any, so we'll take them one at a time. Nine, A, two is the recommendation is to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash seven E, calling for the cancellation of the elementary general fund election. As you'll recall, we agreed to two different resolutions at an earlier meeting, and the recommendation after looking into the financial balances and equities of going out with a levy and not, the administration's recommending that we approve the resolution that calls for the cancellation of the elementary general fund levy election. So is there a motion from a K-12 trustee to do so? Trustee Aguerres has made the motion. Is there a second? Trustee Hobbins has seconded the motion. Is there any board discussion? I'm looking for hands raised virtually. I don't see any, and there aren't any here. Any public comment? I'm just scrolling down so I can make sure. I don't see any hands raised virtually. And so all trust, all K-12 trustees in favor of the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash seven E, which calls for the cancellation of the elementary general fund levy election, please indicate by raising your hand or saying aye. And I'm looking. And that is unanimous as to all K-12 trustees. And then we move on to A three, which is the high school district levy election. And the recommendation from the administration is also to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash eight S, which calls for the cancellation of the high school general fund levy election. Is there a motion from a trustee to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash eight S, which calls for the cancellation of the high school general fund levy election? Moved by trustee Aguerres. Is there a second? Second by trustee Lorenzen. Is there any board discussion? I just want to say thank you to Dr. Watson and Pat for the work you've put into this to be sensitive to everything that's going on in the community and seeing if we can get through this without passing voted on a levies. Any other board discussion or comments? I don't see any online. Any public comment? I'm not, just let me double check. I'll scroll down. I don't see any hands up on remotely. So all trustees in favor of the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash eight S, calling for the cancellation of the high school general fund levy election, please indicate by raising your hand or saying yes. And I'm seeing all hands raised either virtually or in person, so the motion passes unanimously by all trustees. And then we come to B one and two, which is the elementary school year calendar for next school year, and then the high school year calendar for next school year. So Dave, I know that there's a, where did you go? So I know there's a committee that works very diligently on coming up with the recommendation for the board for the schedule, so if you want to touch upon the elementary school first and the high school second, and if there's any commonality, if it's easier to talk about both.
Yeah, what I'll do is I'll kind of give you the process of what we go through. So both the elementary, middle, and high school schedules both started and on the same days. We look at a hundred and eighty instructional days and then seven days that are reserved for what's called professional development, so that exists in both of the calendars. We, the way this is determined or way it's put together is through a committee that's set up in the M E A C B A. We have three representatives, one from elementary, middle school, and high school certified teachers. We also have three administrators, elementary, middle school, and high school principal. We also have the M E A union president, Casey Ballou, and also the M M C E O classified president, Sherry Posma. And we meet over a course of several months and review a bunch of different options and discuss in ways the pros and cons and and address the different issues to come up with the drafts that you see before you tonight. A couple of things I would just point out that again are are common between them. One of the things that we learned this year was we started school with kind of a staggered start. We ended up having a kindergarten and a sixth grade and a ninth grade just by circumstances of COVID. And it was determined by both the administrators and the teachers that that would be a great thing to continue. It really was beneficial. So on this calendar this time, you'll see a kindergarten starting day on August thirtieth, sixth grade starting day on August thirtieth, and a ninth grade starting on August thirtieth. And then the rest of the students would start on the August thirty-first. The other thing that's unique and a little bit different this year, as I mentioned, we have seven professional development days. If you looked in August, we have two of those, the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth of August, kind of sandwiched together. It used to be that we we've broken those out over the course of the year. The reason this year that we are proposing to put them together is because we're going to be introducing a new student information system, the Infinite Campus. Ray Cooper has put together a pretty detailed training schedule over the course of the summer, and so we're wanting to make sure that there are two days that are dedicated at the beginning of the year so all teachers and staff can be educated, set up new classrooms, and learn all the new grading systems under the Infinite Campus system. The other issue always tends to be discussions about spring break. We have coordinated and discussed with the University of Montana. The University of Montana's been very willing to work with us. Their previous scheduled pre-spring break proposal, rather, in March of twenty-two was actually the week of March fourteenth through eighteenth. We asked if they would consider moving it back further a week, the reason being we wanted to have some spacing between then and June. It's nicer to have a break. And so the university did meet and discussed making that modification and change to the week of the twenty-first. So that will correspond with the university does. Also, I would try to point out, I would take on the elementary if there's anything else more specific, we're retaining the parent teacher conferences. High school, we're not doing parent teacher conferences, but we are having a professional development day in November for for those teachers as well. Also, in April, you'll note the twenty-second on the high school schedule, which reflects when the district state music festival is, and so our buildings are used during that time. I think that covers most of it. I'd be glad to answer any questions that people might have specific to either the elementary or high school calendars.
I think the only other thing of note is the two-week break at the holidays.
Yeah, that's correct. That was actually discussed quite a bit. Oftentimes, we've had the two weeks because New Year's and Christmas tend to happen the middle of the week. There was a discussion this year, since those happen on the weekends, whether we want to have an extended two-week break, winter break, or do you wanted to shorten that? I know that both the elementary and the middle school representatives on the committee did do a kind of a straw poll and discuss with their staff which would be the preference for that, and it was decided that the two-week would be more preferable. The other thing that, of course, did too is it made the June date rather than the eighth, which is what we talked about, moving it to the tenth. The teachers thought that was an advantage, as did administrators, because you could keep students more easily engaged through a full last week versus having a shorter last week.
Any questions for Dave about either schedule?
I have one, kind of quick one.
Yes, sorry, trustee Decker, I was looking in the room first. I should be looking down and in the room.
Oh, you can't look two places at once. That's great. I just noticed that the stretch after spring break until Memorial Day is a very unusually long stretch for people in schools. I just am, you know, kind of noticing that and thinking that it might be an interesting to keep our eyes out and see how people do. I think it's ten weeks in a row without a short week, and that is unusual for people in schools.
Yes, I mean, I would agree with you completely. I know that that's a concern that the the committee itself has had as well.
Any other comments or questions for Dave? Not seeing any. Let me double check on those participating remotely. So I don't see any other questions. Let me just turn back to my agenda. So the recommendation or the first action item is to approve the elementary school year calendar for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. This found on page thirty-seven, and the recommendation is that the trustees approve that school year calendar. Is there such a motion? Moved by trustee Hobbins and seconded by trustee Aguerres. Is there any board discussion? Not seeing any hands up. Is there any public comment? Let me just scroll down to make sure. Not seeing any. Then all K-12 trustees in favor of the motion to approve the elementary twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year calendar, please indicate by raising your hand or saying aye. And I see. All elementary K-12 trustees have voted in favor of the motion, so the motion passes unanimously. Then we come to B two, which is to approve the high school year calendar for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. And the recommendation is that the trustees approve the proposed high school twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year calendar found on page thirty-eight. And it is moved by trustee Wake and seconded by trustee McDonald to approve that calendar. Is there any board discussion? Trustee Wake and trustee McDonald, you both have your hands still up, so I didn't know if you wanted to make board comment, too. Nope. I'll just make a comment. Trustee Decker, I too, we discussed that how long that break is, and it's actually, I think, been pretty traditionally that long in recent years. When U of M quit doing an intersession, it changed the schedule for their spring break, and I think all the feeder schools in our spring break. So it's it's a function of not having a winter session session at U of M anymore. So it's it's a little bit longer, but thank you for noticing that. Any other trustee comments? Any public comment? Not seeing any. So all trustees in favor of the motion to approve the high school twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year calendar attached as on page thirty-eight, please indicate by raising your hand or saying yes or aye. And so that is unanimous as to all trustees present, which are all trustees. And so now with that, we take public comment at the beginning and end of every board meeting in case someone can't get to the meeting right as it starts. So this is the opportunity for public comment on any non-agenda item that someone would like to make. And again, the same protocols would be in place. So if you want to make any comments, please raise your hand, and I'll call on you and we'll unmute you. Let me double check. I don't see any hands up. Is that correct, Hatton? Okay, so at this point, the normal portion of the board meeting is adjourned, and now we're going to go into a board work session. As you'll recall, we were working on the strategic plan, and so I don't know if Deb Silk is going to be able to join us, but we left the conversation kind of pending at the last meeting and, you know, with people to look a little bit more deeply at both the core values. And so with that, I've asked Dr. Watson to bring Deb back so that maybe we can finish the conversation, because I think, as Dr. Watson mentioned in his superintendent announcements, there's going to be a strategic planning committee meeting tomorrow night, which is going to try to bring back all the participants in the first two sessions that we started before March thirteenth of last year. And so it was a really robust and really positive conversation and involvement by a lot of stakeholders. So this is the board's opportunity to take a first look at it before it goes out back to public review. So I'll leave it up to you, Dr. Watson, about how to go forward.
Yes, thanks. And Deborah Silk is back on this evening with us. And if you'll recall, before our meeting before spring break, we spent quite a bit of time hashing over the core ideology, which is the core purpose and the core values. And we took those comments, Deborah took those comments and and reframed and revised the core purpose and the core values. We just wanted to give you a a chance, another crack at those before they before the public meeting tomorrow night. So I actually can share my screen. I think I can pull it up, Deborah, if that helps.
Yeah, that would be fine, Rob.
Hopefully, you can see that. So core purpose, and I think, Deborah, the part that you added was in red here, but to engage all students in a high-quality education that empowers, inspires, and prepares each student for their future.
Correct. In looking at the the notes when we met, I think it was on March ninth, Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, when the board took a look at the draft core purpose and draft core value, I was taking notes of some suggested changes, and I think there was consensus to include the word empowers in the core purpose. And remember, too, that these are all draft at this point in time, but as Rob stated, we thought it was important to get this in front of the board one more time before your meeting tomorrow. So what you see here is a red underline, which means the words that are added in a yellow strikeout of the changes, both in the draft core purpose and draft core values. You'll remember, too, Robin Marshick, you don't mind me just sort of explaining the changes, we had quite a bit of discussion on the opportunities. And based upon the input that we received from the trustees on the ninth, it sounded like you wanted that to focus more on equity rather than opportunities, although you'll see in the description, it still talks about equitable access to opportunities. There weren't any changes to the student center core value, weren't any suggested changes to the innovation core value. Based upon the input that we received, you wanted the safety and inclusion core value to be broken out into two separate core values. And and listen, I think that there's validity in that. So I broke those out, put a new inclusion core value in there, where in essence, it talks about the culture embracing the diversity, where individuals feel a strong sense of belonging, which I think is what you were getting at on the inclusion piece. And then the last one there on community, you guys had rightfully talked about, you know, it's not just about the Missoula community, it's about the connectiveness and building relationships with people. And I know that we had talked about, you know, connectivity or connectedness, but in looking at the notes that I took from last session, I thought that the, and when you're talking about headliners, it's really, you know, those words in bold. I think what you guys were really talking about was the relationships that you have with people. And then you wanted, of course, the inclusion of a reference to families, and you didn't want to confine it to the Missoula County, given your outlying areas that you serve, one of which would be the Seeley Lake community. And so I made those changes as well. So Rob and Hatton and I just wanted to get your feedback on these. If you're okay with it, and we can have some discussion about the changes here, we would plan on bringing these to the larger group tomorrow, just to let them know that this is the draft based upon the work that we did last winter and the work that the administrative team and board of trustees has done to date. I think we need to be careful that we frame these as drafts. I don't want to spend a lot of time on these tomorrow during our session with the larger group, but I I think we need feedback. And I did talk to Hatton and Rob about putting out a survey even after our meeting tomorrow focusing on megatrends, but we might even want to think about getting feedback on these drafts from a larger group as well. So Rob, Hatton, anyone else? Have comments?
I don't think we do. We just wanted the board to have another look at these, based on your feedback from the last meeting.
So since this is a work session, it's a more So since this is a work session, it's more informal, so I don't know if anyone has any thoughts or comments on the proposed changes that have been made. I'll look for, well, I can't quite look for all hands up because there's a screen being shared, but I can scroll up and down. And just for clarification, Dr. Watson and Hatton and Deb, Deborah, all trustees are welcome to attend the meeting tomorrow night. And if I didn't have a different obligation, I would definitely want to be there, so.
Yes, that's correct. And I think trustee Decker may have been indicating she has a question.
I guess the equity bullet point, I'm wondering if you would say a little bit about how the language about based upon student need was settled on. I guess I'm thinking that either that concept might be enfolded into equity itself or if there might be a way to say it that has more to do with like uniqueness or different, like need is just a word that we use in a very particular way in the schools a lot of the time. And it makes it sound as though what we're talking about is purely about like poverty, for example, or special needs. But really equity is kind of a more nuanced concept than that. I don't know. And I don't want to get too far into the weeds either, but I just was wondering if you could say a little more about that particular phrase.
Grace, my response to that is I think your point is well taken. I think that, you know, when you're talking about student need, you're not really talking about, you know, student skills or attributes. And maybe we could add something along those lines. That's a really good insight.
Yeah, the only thing I would add to that, trustee Decker, and I think it's, it probably came out of this notion that when we talk about equity in schools, we realize that equal is not the same thing as equity. So equity is all about kids getting what they need to succeed versus being equal is everybody getting the same thing. But we know that if we provide everybody the same thing, it's not enough for some students or maybe too much for some students. So that's, there's probably a better way to say that. That's probably where the student need came from. I always say that, you know, based on getting what they need at that time to succeed, but maybe, maybe there's a better way to say it.
Trustee Mercer?
I think I agree with trustee Decker's first suggestion perhaps of just cut it and say that it's built into equitable access and that that's what equitable access encompasses.
Suggesting just taking out the based on student need.
Yeah, comprehensive education, period.
Yep. I think that's an improvement. Any other comments on either that section or any of the sections? I have one and you'll shoot me. But it's kind of, it shoots and leaves. In some of the statements, we use Oxford commas and in other statements, we don't. And I think just for consistency's sake, it would be good to use them to indicate that some are not merged concepts, but actually independent concepts that we're hoping to support in our district. And so there's a couple sentences where the Oxford comma is in there and a couple of sentences where it's not. And I know that's really wordsmithing, but I think it's helpful to be more consistent about that each of the items mentioned are independent goals that we have. Any other suggestions? I mean, any other discussion points or things that either Deborah or Hatton or Dr. Watson might be able to bring to the larger group tomorrow night? Trustee Mercer? And trustee Service has a question and then trustee Mercer. So trustee Service, go ahead and then I'll get to trustee Mercer.
I had a question more about, I'm not able to make the public meeting tomorrow. I can make the next one, but how exactly are we going to take, how's the meeting going to work? Since I'm not going to be there to see it, I just was just curious how you get input from on a Zoom meeting.
That's a good question. What I've discussed with both Hatton and Rob, since we're going to be doing it virtually, you guys will remember when we met last January and February, we broke out into small groups, right? And Hatton's going to do that with us tomorrow evening as well. So what we talked about was number one, first, providing an overview and reminding people of the work that we started last January and February. So I will give an overview. We're then going to put up this core ideology in draft form. And again, let people know that this is draft at this point in time. Again, I don't want to get too hung up on, but we will allow them some time for input when they get into their small groups. What I really want to focus on during tomorrow's meeting is that long-term envisioned future that we had talked about in February. And given the fact that we now have a year under our belt with a pandemic, talking about where they see Missoula County Public Schools 10 to 15 years out and looking at some of the lessons that we've learned over the past year. So that really, that is the structure of the meeting. But again, we're going to be working in small groups. I think you have to when you have that many people on Zoom. So we will work in small groups. We'll let people review, get feedback on the core purpose, core values. And then we want to get their input on the long-term envisioned future. And then we're planning on sending out a survey after that to get their feedback on that mega trends analysis, that external environmental scan. And you guys probably will remember that, I think, from our February meeting where we talked about demographics, business and economic, climate, legislation and regulations, technology and science and politics and social values. I think we don't have enough time tomorrow evening to get all of that in, so we're going to do some of this work through surveys, if that answers your question.
Yes, thank you.
Trustee Mercer, you had a question?
I guess as I was just sitting here in light of sort of the week's events and the students spoke at the beginning and some of the public comment in here, and I'm, I don't know if I have a strong opinion one way or the other, but the inclusion one, I guess I'm wondering if that is sufficiently strong. And I'm sort of as I'm going through these, thinking of how this would apply to the current thing. It's a relatively passive statement. It's not, for example, anti-racist. I don't know. I just, I just, that was the thought was running through my head, I guess.
Any other thoughts that you want to share with Dr. Watson and Deborah to bring forward tomorrow night for maybe some things to modify or at least think about adding or subtracting?
And Marcia, I'm sorry, I didn't hear all of trustee Mercer's comments on the inclusion piece.
Do you mind repeating them? I don't want to try to put words in your mouth.
I'm not going to be able to either. I just, as I was thinking about it, I was wondering whether it was sufficiently strong to deal with what the students spoke about at the beginning of the meeting and this week's events. And that it is not directly affirmative, anti-racist. I don't know. I just, that's all. I didn't know if it was strong enough, I guess, in my mind.
Trustee Oldperson, you wanted to say, add something?
I agree with trustee Mercer. I think we can always be a lot stronger when it comes to racism. I think being a parent of a student of color, we have dealt with racism and discrimination day in and day out. It's institutional, systemic. And I know this, our district is working towards addressing that, but we can always do better.
Well, remember too, and it's important to note, both in terms of your core purpose and core values, remember those are not goal areas, okay? Those are who you are, what you stand for, and what you value. Now with that said, anything that's included in your core purpose and core values, and I think your point is well taken, a lot of these things, it's not as though you've reached 100% and I don't want to say proficiency, but you've reached excellence, you know, where you can say we're doing this and we're really good at it. I think every one of these will require a persistence in terms of getting where you want to be. So yeah, you can always improve in any of these areas. What you want to identify through your core purpose is really articulating to people. And again, not goal areas, but what it is that you stand for and what's important to you.
Any other comments or questions?
Yes.
Oh, Hatton, sorry, I can't see that far.
If it's okay, I just wanted to offer and contribute too, that I think we are in a very conscious process of helping our staff understand what anti-racism is and what that position of action looks like through our I Value Working Group. And I think it's certainly possible to write in that language now, knowing that that may not be culturally understood as a vocabulary term amongst everybody and we're on a process to ensure that it is.
Any other comments? I just have one procedural one. So after the two community involved sessions, then is it coming back to the board for final or semi-final approval and then final approval? I mean, we'll do sets of eyes on it at some point. Or I just wonder, you know, what the vision is because we want to make sure that we take measured steps and don't rush it. But on the other hand, we thought we'd be having this conversation last summer instead of this summer. So we're a little, we're about 12 months out.
Yeah, I would let Deborah weigh in. My impression is that there's several more steps here. She talked about the envisioned future. We're going to get to a point too where we've got goal areas. And remember from our last discussion that goal areas may change over time. The core purpose and the core values really sort of stand the test of time, but goal areas drive sort of strategic objectives, which we really want to get to before next fall, so we can start building plans around strategic objectives. So my vision would be that, you know, once we get a pretty good draft from these community meetings, that it would come back before the board, sort of the completed package for at least two meetings to allow for public comment before full, you know, before the full adoption by the board. Deborah, would you add anything to that?
No, I would agree with you. If you look at the meeting that we're holding tomorrow night and then the meeting that is scheduled in April, and Rob is correct, once we at least take another look at the long-term envisioned future, send out the survey on the mega trends analysis, which really bridges the gap between your long-term envisioned future and what I would characterize as your shorter-term goals, that meeting in April is when we're going to talk about three to five-year priorities and hopefully one to two-year strategies. And Marcia, in direct response to your question, I would agree with Rob. Once we get a, and I think we probably can get a draft strategic plan together after that April meeting, I would agree that then we're going to take, and I think the board needs to ask for input on it, and I agree with Rob's strategy in terms of a couple of meetings. But eventually, the board will need to adopt the strategic plan. You need to understand though, that when the board adopts that initial strategic plan, that's just the beginning of it, right? Then you're starting on a new process moving forward. So rather than looking at it as sort of the end of a process, it's actually the beginning. So.
So just to paraphrase, so really the strategic plan provides the structure for moving forward for at least a five-year plan.
At least a five-year plan. And remember, when you go through this process, number one, once the board adopts a plan, you're going to, and I know that Rob is well-versed in this, you're going to want to get feedback from the staff on what activities they're engaging in to make progress on those goals and strategies that you've set forth on a regular basis. And then, of course, you want to make sure, and through our process, you want to make sure that we, you, review and refine this document and this plan at least once every year because it will change. What we're looking at here, as Rob noted, these timeless concepts of core purpose and values will not change over time. A year from now, your long-term envisioned future probably won't either. Your three to five-year goal areas may. Your one to two-year strategies will change. So it's intended to be a living, nimble, adaptive document to where it's adapting and you're always anticipating, you know, what's coming in the future. That's the whole process. And the other thing that this does is if you have this type of structure in place, and Ann knows this from being on the MTSBA board, but if you have this type of structure in place, then as the board changes or if your staff leadership changes, you have a quote-unquote recipe to ensure that the district keeps moving in the direction. And that changes over time. And you have to think about it as a continual process of moving forward.
Any other comments or thoughts anyone wants to share? Oh, Grace, I'm sorry, I just, I can't see the trustees now because of the screen share, so I apologize. Trustee Decker, go ahead.
Thanks. With that sort of discussion in mind about how these core values really drive the, like the way that we think about all of the different efforts and initiatives that we might get involved with to pursue these kind of long-term goals, there are a couple of significant maybe missions or things that I'm not understanding. Like I know that we have some goals around some areas that I don't see where they fit here. And maybe it's a language thing, but maybe not. For example, our zero waste and environmental initiatives and thinking about climate and thinking about our place on the planet and any of those pieces, I don't see where they would land. And then I also don't see staff reflected or the idea of community of school as well as like relationships with the community outside of school and with families. And that's an important piece, sort of the authenticity, like honesty, trust, all of those things that are really, I think, really central to the work that's happening on the part of admin and the board. And I don't see those reflected, at least not explicitly quite yet. So those are just two things that I would raise.
And Grace, I would tell you that as we move through the, this process, don't forget about those, okay? I think it's important that when you're looking at the components, that you want to make sure, and I'm guessing that those things, I know that when you're talking about the zero waste initiative, I know, and thank you for jogging my memory, I remember those discussions at our January and February meetings last year. So those will appear, I'm guessing, somewhere in your strategic plan. We'll just have to look at the best place to house those.
Trustee Mercer, sorry.
I think though, in response to trustee Decker, I think at least as to the world one, there was some discussion last time that relationships was, the final category was in our world and our, you know, broader humanity sort of thing. So at least to me, that one had a place there.
Anyone else? I will echo Deborah, if there's a way to include community within the building, community within the community, community within the state and community within the world, I think that would be a good thing. You know, today I was listening to some Big Sky key clubbers and they're buying gift cards for all their custodians because they feel like they've just done such yeoman's work during this academic year and they just want to make sure that they're appreciated. So I just, I want to have a sense of being able to capture those kinds of relationships. able to capture those kinds of relationships somehow. And so I, I won't be at the meeting, so I'll leave it to you all to work it out. But it was heartening to hear that students are thinking about both within their buildings and also on a, on a bigger scale. So. Trustee Old Person?
At the last time we spoke about this, I did talk about when we discussed relationships about the use of families in that section, and including how I wanted our schools to be more like one, because we're always Sentinel Spartans, Hellgate Knights. And I think we really should make sure to know that we are one district. And I, and I said that the last meeting too, because I really think it's important for our, for our community that, to know that we are one, one district, one.
And I think Dr. Watson and Deborah are probably taking notes on all the comments that are being made to bring forward, and it looks like Hatton's also nodding her head. So any other comments that you'd like to move forward?
Yeah, I would just reflect that I think you could, I think you could expand that relationships one to really talk about interdependence, not only with the community, with our families, with staff, but also within our schools, among our schools, between our schools, however you want to say that. But I could see that one expanding a little bit to include some of the comments that we just heard.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with all of that, all of the above.
And so any, should I say, any final thoughts or comments you'd like to move forward? I'm seeing people nodding that they're at least comfortable enough with the process tonight, that it can be rolled out to a larger community tomorrow, and in the, at the April meeting. Is that good with trustees? And I'm, I'll try to look online. Oh, thanks. Now I can see everybody. I see nods by everyone. Is that okay with everyone online? Okay, I just, sounds good then. And so I'll call this board work session to a close at this point. And thank you all for being here and participating. And we're adjourned again.
Thank you. Good to see everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for your time.